We're good to go, Larry? Okay. Send a call to order the February 15, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Crowley, will you lead us to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad, and those that were affected with that terrible shooting in Florida yesterday? Thank you. Okay. First up on tonight's agenda is announcements. Ms. Frescatour.
Good evening. I have two announcements tonight. One's for the Ben Wilson Senior Center. They're going to be having their Senior Health and Wellness Expo sponsored by Parks Casino on Thursday, March 8th, at 2018, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Free admission. There'll be over 50 vendors and agencies. They'll be talking about continuing care retirement communities, in-home companies, realtors, elder lawyers, senior finances. There'll be raffle prizes and light concessions available. You can contact the Senior Center at (215) 672-8380. Next announcement is for our Parks and Rec. There'll be a few seats left for our Parks and Recreation Annual Wine and Cheese Bag and Basket Bingo to be held Friday, February 23rd, at the Ben Wilson Senior Activity Center. A $40 ticket includes 20 games of bingo, wine, beer, and snacks. Multiple sponsorship levels are also available, $50 to $300. Check on availability, please call the Parks and Recreation office. Discount tickets are available at Parks and Recreation for movies for $9.50, which is quite a bargain. Flower show tickets for $29.50 for any day. Ski lift tickets to area Pocono Mountains. Dog licenses are available for purchase at the Parks and Rec office, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, renewals for the Bark Park are available for purchase. New members must complete an application, provide proof of rabies inoculation or current dog licenses. Don't forget to register your children, ages 3 to 10, for the upcoming annual Egg Scramble, sponsored by Fulton Bank, held at Warminster Community Park on Thursday, March 29th. For information on any of these dates, please visit the website for the Warminster Parks and Recreation Department, or you may call the office at (215) 443-5428. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatour. Mr. Monroe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I don't have any announcements. I do have a comment. I just want to, you know, millions of people went down to the Eagles Parade this last week, and I was one of those that were willing to get up at 3:45 in the morning, and I did make it down to the Warminster train station. And I got there around 4:30 in the morning, and the line was about five to 10 people wide and wrapped around the corner. It was insane. And I just want to say that the Warminster Police did a phenomenal job. I mean, it was orderly. They had everybody out in force, and, you know, things like that can go horribly wrong, but because of their presence and how they ran it, and, you know, the township staff, Mr. Schuster, you know, it was just phenomenal. It was a job really well done. So I just want to say to the manager, thank you very much, and to the police chief and the lieutenant over there, I let you guys know, they just, I was very impressed. That is all.
Well, I appreciate the pictures you sent me, too. Thank you. Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, I just want to remind everyone, if you have any unwanted or unused prescription medications, you can safely get rid of them over at our police department. It's the green box in the lobby at our police station. And if I can do a little shameless plug here, I was recently elected second vice president to the Bucks County Association of Township Officials, or PICADO. If you're not sure what PICADO is, it's a collection of all the township supervisors, tax collectors, and auditors within Bucks County, and they do a lot of really good work for the townships in the county. In fact, recently, PICADO just held a seminar, a training session, for newly-elected supervisors, and it was spearheaded by our very own Greg Schuster, our township manager. He did an excellent job with the program, and I hope you come back next year and do it.
Be delighted to.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. There's a convention this coming Saturday.
Correct.
We're forward to it. Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. New businesses to Warminster. Since our last meeting, it's been about, about six weeks since we actually really reported on this. We'd like to introduce and welcome to town NWAC Environmental over at 864 Eagle Boulevard, Branch Fitness Academy, 346 Nina Way, Legal Communications Group, which is a marketing law firm for law offices, at 700 Veterans Circle, Suite 400, Buck, Tokowski, Goodman, and Feldman LLC, which are financial services providers, are at 626 Jacksonville Road, Suite 207. Over on Cardinal Lane, we have Elite Technique Training, which is a fitness and sports performance training outfit. Toto Financial does accounting at 176 York Road, and the Comprehensive Learning Center at 444 Jacksonville Road. The Comprehensive Learning Center offers educational and behavioral services for individuals with autism. So we welcome all to Warminster. We thank them for choosing to make their home here, and we wish them all the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I have a couple of announcements. First is I'd like to send my condolences and the condolences of the board and administration to the Thern family on the recent passing of Joanne Thern, who was the wife of Tom Thern, who is a former employee, but not only that, a long-term resident and a longtime friend of Warminster Township. So our condolences go out to the Thern family. I also want to thank everyone that participated in last Friday night's Warminster Rotary Club Coach Bag Bingo. It was a tremendous success. Thank you, Ms. Cook, for coming out. Yes, it was a real success, though. We raised, I think we're at around seven, I think we're over six now. I think we're at around $6,500 we raised. And I like to participate. I don't play. I'd go around and sell the 50/50s, and there's nothing like 150 crazed women, because they're crazy for those bags. So it's a lot of fun, and it's a great fundraiser for the Rotary Club. So thanks to everyone that participated. And I also would like to mention that the board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss union and litigation matters. And before we move on to presentations, I'd like to introduce the newest member of our panel up here, who is Frank Bartle, who is our new township solicitor. Frank, I'd like you to feel free to tell the folks who you are.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Frank Bartle, and I am a member of the law firm of DeChell, Bartle, and Dooley. I've been at that firm. I'm one of the partners that started. Mark DeChell was there for a short time, and he and I joined together. Jack Dooley was there shortly thereafter. So we've been together almost 40 years. I've been with Mark 40 years. I've probably been with Jack about 39 years. So we're a very stable law firm, been in business for a long time. We have 16 attorneys at three locations. We're in Lansdale, we're in Pottstown, and we're in Boyertown. We have a full-service law firm, although I personally have done real estate, zoning, land development, the litigation that goes with that, and municipal law for the better part of 35 years. I'm AV rated by Martindale-Hubble, which is the highest rating that you can get with respect to competency and also with respect to ethical standards. So I'm very proud of that and have been in receipt of many awards in terms of the things that I've done in the municipal field. I've represented many municipalities, all types of municipalities. I've represented zoning hearing boards. I've represented authorities. I've represented school districts and the like. So I've done that. Our team that I have in my office is a team of skilled professionals who have been together for a period of time. We have about six lawyers that do municipal work that are in our firm, and we have a staff that services the work of our clients as well. So we're very pleased to be here. I'd like to thank everybody here on the board for giving us this opportunity to be the solicitor of your township. We're very excited about representing Warminster. We think it's a wonderful community, and I'd just like to say thank you to everybody, and I look forward to working with each of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay. Next up, I'm going to move into presentations. And at this time, I'd like to recognize those that have stepped off of boards and commissions recently. There's, I think there's only one here that we're going to recognize tonight, and that's David Hosschott. I'd like to ask Dave to come up and thank him for his service on the library board. Thank you, Dave. We appreciate it. It's grateful township, and the board's very grateful as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Dave.
I'd just like to take a moment and read off the names of the other certificates I have here, being that no one else is present tonight. We will mail them out to them. We have one here for Ruth Ann Einan, who served as vacancy chair for three years. Peter Petrangilo, who served on the planning commission for seven years. Ken Penko, who served on the Warminster Municipal Authority for nine years. Edward Pfeifer, who served on the Construction Board of Appeals for 11 years. Andrew Dixon, who served on the Environmental Advisory Commission for two years. John Polkowski, who was on Park and Rec for nine years. And John was the representative from the Centennial School District, and he'll be sorely missed on that board. John is a heck of a nice guy and was a really, really positive guy on that board. So, yeah, so I want to thank John for his service. Judy Hoover, who was on Park and Rec for two years. Megan Brzezinski, who was on Park and Rec for a year. Emma Hertz was on Park and Rec for a year. Then we went, we had two from the Pension Advisory Committee who stepped aside. One was Tom Panzer, former supervisor and county treasurer. I want to thank Tom for his service that helped stabilize our pension advisory committee and our pension investment advisor. So the mission accomplished for Tom there, and I appreciate it. And Richard Smythe, too, who was the former chairman of the Christ Home, who was really helpful on that board as well to get it stabilized to where we are. So thanks to both of those guys. And thanks to everyone, and please, we have some appointments on tonight's agenda. Please do. If there's an opening, put your name in. We're glad to have the community participation. That's what makes things go here. That's how we hear what's going on out there every day. So, thank you. So next up is land use matters, which we do not have any. And then next up is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to the five-minute guideline as recognized by the chair. Public comment? How you doing, John?
Good evening, board. I've been doing very well. I have a couple items. It's all over the place, but let me go through them real quick. The first is the Doutier Farm. I know it's on the consent agenda, but when I was chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee, one of the things that was looked into was how to improve the intersection of Murnson Street Road. And through the township supervisor that was our liaison person, it was suggested that at some point that the only way to improve that intersection is to purchase that home that's next to that business and make that an offset road and just a four-way lane. So with this Doutier Farm being constructed, and I know we're not into that part of the land development, but I'd like you guys to put that on the radar to see if that is feasible for the developer to look into doing something with that intersection and purchasing that property, making the road the way it's supposed to be to get rid of that, you know, intersection that just really backs up. And that's going to, you know, alleviate some of the problems that was discussed, you know, when they were talking about how far it backs up on Ivyland Road now.
I think the township managers had some discussions with the traffic engineer regarding that intersection.
Yeah, I have had some preliminary discussion. We're obviously going to have to see how the land development process unfolds with the Doutier Farm, but it's definitely on our radar. It's something, I believe you said, street and Murnson, but I think you meant Ivyland and Murnson.
Ivyland and Murnson, yes.
So, I mean, it is on our radar. It is a problematic intersection, not just in the conditions that it caused, but also the potential solution and what we'd have to fix itself.
Right. And Craig was very helpful when we had traffic safety, and, you know, it was the engineer's recommendation then that that was the only feasible way, you know, to correct that.
We did, before Greg's time, and probably back around one time you mentioned, we did look at that a little bit more. There was, staff looked into it. We did some sketches and tried to figure out if we could do it, and it just didn't materialize. So the developer is aware of that. I think, you know, we'll continue to explore avenues, but I'll be upfront. It's been looked at. We looked at it back then, and it's very difficult. It's also very difficult to, you know, you can't require the developer to purchase an off-site property.
I know, but if that's, if you can put money aside towards that, or if it's feasible to do eminent domain, you know, if they can't come to a reasonable...
Well, that would be on the township, so not the developer.
Right. Right. That's why I'm asking you to put that on the radar to try to improve that intersection, you know, going forward. I mean, it's a lot more homes coming in. Okay, so I also want to applaud the vote from the last meeting. I left, I had to leave. It was a long meeting. It was a lot of people. I left disappointed because the vote was tabled when I left, and I was pleasantly surprised to see that, you know, you did have the vote and it was squashed. But along that line, I would like to ask the supervisors if there's any way to introduce some kind of ordinance that would require a vote, a referendum vote, for selling any of the assets should it ever come up again, not just, you know, the purview of the five-member board, you know, to do that. So I don't know what can be looked into in that matter.
Sure. I'll be happy to answer that. The law with respect to referendums in Pennsylvania is really quite clear. If the legislature wants to allow a referendum on a particular matter, it does so by legislation, and it tells you specifically what should be done by referendum and what must be done by referendum. So that's the way that the law runs. You cannot, as a municipality, decide to have a referendum on something that is not designated by the legislature to be a referendum item. And the reason you can't do that is because, think about it, everybody in their local communities then would be putting the burden on the board of elections and the county employees to run the business essentially of the municipality. So that's the way, that's the way that it goes. Unfortunately, this board has no authority to say, "Let's have a referendum on those things that are within its jurisdiction and aren't legislatively provided for referendum."
I understand. And I know the school board has certain items that goes beyond their budget that would have to go to a referendum.
You're talking about the Act 1 with respect to the school board and the enactment of something beyond the index. Yes, sir, but that's specifically provided in the legislation for them to do that.
Right. So is there anything in the legislation as it currently stands that would, you know, provide for something of this magnitude to ask the general public to have some input on this?
Well, you're, you are required, as a municipality, to have input from the general public. There's a difference between input and a referendum.
And referendum. I realize that.
The input comes in the ability to speak openly and comment publicly. That they're required to do, and I understand they did that, by having comment period beforehand and giving everybody the opportunity. But with respect to placing it on a referendum, no, there's no authority for doing that.
And does this fall in the purview of being eligible for a referendum vote?
No, that's what I said. This, what they just...
You said there's certain things, but I didn't know whether this was one of them.
Yeah, what they just went through did not fall within, with any legislation that would allow a referendum on that item.
Okay, then we can just hope that our board acts prudently going forward. I also wanted to, you know, just make a quick comment about trying to keep politics out of, you know, this budget process. I mean, for a while there, at the last meeting, I thought I was watching a debate between Fox News and CNN. Finger pointing doesn't, doesn't get us anywhere. So, you know, we have a bipartisan board, and, but we're all in this together, so we need to come with a common solution, so.
I agree, John. You know, we do have conversations amongst ourselves, and we try to keep the politics out of the boardroom. I think we did once in a while, emotions get...
Keep it on the campaign trail.
Right, right.
And then the last thing I just wanted to mention was the thing that hit the paper the other day about the public water and that toxic chemical that was dumped, and nobody was notified. It happened December 15th, and that cyanide was poured into an inlet somewhere between County Line Road and Street Road from 611 to Second Street Pike, and nobody was notified. I mean, you know, we all have pets. That could have been, you know, a dangerous situation. Kids can be playing in them streams. So where was the breakdown in the communication?
Well, first of all, it wasn't our agency that was the lead agency on that. But I don't believe there was a breakdown. The appropriate agencies came out, and they determined that they could not find any trace of cyanide anywhere. So without any apps, without any information, there's nothing to warn people about. Wouldn't send out an information bulletin saying, you know, "We have this person of interest," and there's no evidence of cyanide. We don't want to create a panic when there's nothing to talk about.
Well, but I think it would have been prudent to, you know, to be safe with your pets and try to keep them from roaming, even if, you know, if a stream happens to be, you know, in there or when you take your pet for a walk or something. Anyway, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Is there any other public comments? Sure. Darlene, Jack, whoever wants to go first?
Jack Diamond, Kent Road. Our new solicitor answered one of my questions. I had mentioned at the last meeting that I thought the borrowing $7 million should have called for a referendum. So if you say that's illegal, they could still, in good conscience, try to inform the public and make a mailing to every taxpayer, to every resident, and say, "Return, return this slip with it," to get, to get public feedback. I'm sure you did everything legally in terms of, yes, public input. Well, here's the, here's the crowd that's going to give input on, you know, topics tonight. So the public, I think, could be better informed about, and I consider that a major issue, as was the Water Authority, and as is Shenandoah Woods. Now, I had commented at the last meeting about Shenandoah Woods, and I see on the website that, obviously, it didn't cut any ice, that it's still, in your minds, a done deal. But everything's about money. I don't know, I still, I'd appreciate it if one of you could, could maybe just tell the public what the benefit is of spending these millions of dollars.
Jack, it hasn't been spent yet, and I appreciate your comments and everything, but I take exception to saying we don't, we don't communicate with the public. I know there's multiple of these boards that are always communicating with the public. We blew the whistle on the Water Authority sale. We brought up the Shenandoah Woods for two years before it really got to it. So maybe we're not talking to the same channels. Maybe a mailing's the way to go, but I think we are trying. And with terms of the Shenandoah Woods, that agreement is still under, it hasn't been big, it's under consideration. Nothing's been executed.
Well, that was my understanding, so I'm still holding some optimism.
But when you come up here and say publicly that you saw some of the website, and obviously it went one ear out the other, and it's a done deal, I have to push back respectfully and say, "Nothing's a done deal yet."
I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear it.
So that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Does that mean, does that mean it's still some consideration?
There's always, everything's a negotiation. Everything's always under consideration.
Well, it didn't seem that way, but okay, I'll hold out some cause for hope. You know, and Shenandoah Woods, as I said, okay, you're not going to respond to me now. Sometime before this meeting's over, it would be nice if they would give, somebody give a comment, more of an explanation of why, what benefit it is to the public, let's put it that way. Now, I looked at the website, and I'm, too much trouble for me. I'm getting old and tired. But I, there's one phrase in here that scares the devil out of me. On page five, talking about, you know, this sort of finances and dollars and cents is what gets me. And I had asked Mr. Schuster. He didn't come up with a number of what this new outfit, what is it, FPM, FM, whatever, what rate of return they have been getting. And you indicated, "Well, we just started with us." But what's their track record?
Well, again, there's no track record right now. I think the...
With you, but they've been in business.
Yeah, why don't you ask me that question at the end of the first quarter, and then I can provide you a report.
Well, how about, with their other, their past customers, what's their track record with customers? Have they been getting seven and a half, eight percent?
It depends on every single year. It also depends on the customer, depending on what kind of investment strategy and portfolio they want to choose.
But, but do you know what rate they have gotten, if they have gotten that kind of money?
Have they disclosed their clients' rates to me? No, they have not.
Okay.
I can tell you, though, in a previous municipality, I did use PFM for pension advisory services, and I don't remember the exact number, but I remember being quite pleased with the performance that they had. Also, you have to make sure it's relative to what the market is. So I wouldn't say, "Oh, they have to hit eight percent or seven and a half percent." What we're looking for, are they beating the market on a consistent basis? You know, if the markets do, if they come in and said they did eight percent, you know, most of us would say, "Okay, that's great." Well, not if the market's doing 10%. So we want them to do better than the market, whether the market is up or down. We also want to make sure that we are protecting them. They take strategies, so if some of our investments increase, or, you know, other ones are protective, some go down, we have protection on the other side. So they're looking at having a balanced portfolio for us. So I'd be happy to provide the reports to any member of the public. They're just not available yet. I would wait until the end of the first quarter and ask them, ask me a question. I'd be happy to turn those over.
Well, it's, I raised a question, you know, because of our situation, but it's a nationwide situation. And so many funds have not gotten anywhere near 6%. So, and due to that, and you say, yes, so you know that, is this line here on page five that says, they're using, for the pension, they're using a smoothing method for non-uniform pensions. Well, smoothing, I take it, means that they're not putting in as much as, as much as would otherwise be required. We're standing back and crossing our fingers that at some point, you'll get a little more so it balances out.
Correct.
But that doesn't seem to be what's happening, not just here. I mean, I'm talking countrywide. This is a pickle with this pension situation. But the next line is the doozy to me. "The choice coupled with an aggressive assumed rate of return." Now, that line says to me that we're being overly optimistic. Because you know you're being overly optimistic. And that's not, that's, 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 that's the road to destruction. And as I say, it's not your fault. You've, you know, none of you got us into this pickle, none of you personally. It's an inherited pickle, and it's a statewide and a countrywide pickle. But defined benefit pensions are killing us, and they're killing the whole country, and in my opinion, they have to be totally eliminated, totally. But, you know, to say you're coupling, you're assuming an aggressive rate, I think that optimism is misplaced. And as a matter of fact, the school board, more than our problems, is what goes on in the school board. And there's, they have a site, and they say they have to jack up their rate a tiny bit. So they're going up a tad, and in the next five years, they expect it to go up 2.89% their contribution rate required from the schools. So what the taxpayers pay to the schools is even more, hits us harder than this. So as I commented, I think I sent a comment to you indicating that the best we can hope for is try and tread water. You can't, you can't do anything, tread water and let the big boys do the fighting, which they should be doing.
And you and I have been corresponding quite, quite a bit, and I agree with you, Jack. I think the state legislature really needs to take this issue up, nation, every state legislature throughout the country needs to take this up. They do.
But I'm asking, this, this board, like the Walt Disney song, you know, "Let it begin with you." Let it begin with you. Nobody wants to take the first step of belling up and trying to get a consensus, whether within Bucks County or Pennsylvania, get all the municipalities together. You know, they have school board meetings collectively of the school board members. They have meetings. Get together, join, but nobody, nobody, nobody wants to do it. Let it begin with you. Get, because something has to be done. There's no sense waiting until everybody's house is in, if not foreclosure, at least behind in their, in their rent, in their property taxes.
And I agree with you, Jack. That's where we're headed if something's not done.
And another, another thing I noticed on the website, and of course, it mentioned Shenandoah Woods, and, and as I said, that you say it's not a done deal, and I'm glad to hear there's still some openness there. But Park and Rec has always, and it sort of, all comes under the realm of that, but Park and Rec has always traditionally lost money. Shouldn't, in my opinion, but it has traditionally lost money. I'm glad to hear there's some miracle coming, because we've had a few hundred thousand dollars deficit for the past few years. I mean, I have the actual numbers here, but now they're projecting over $400,000 profit. I mean, I have the actual numbers here, but now they're projecting over $400,000 profit for 2018. Uh, boy, that's a miracle coming.
That's news to me.
It's, 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 uh, it's, it's on there, one page, whatever. One of the pages, it's there. Greg, Greg must've wrote it, so I guess it's, you must know what page it is.
We'll have to check the website.
Typo, Jack. We might have to take a look at that one.
A typo, yeah.
Just, just to be clear, Park and Recreation, as most town, all township departments, is not a profit center, so.
Well, we realize that.
So, it has run a deficit over the last few years, and with the current budget that is enacted, will continue to run a deficit. So it is definitely not making a profit. So I'm not exactly sure what you're looking at, but it is, is not a profit.
Well, I, I, I thought I had the copy here, but that, at one point, they, they mentioned that, um, whatever, and, and, uh, last year, uh, they lost $145,000. It was only $37,000 in 2016. $114,000 in 2015, uh, 2014, $391,000 deficit. Now, yeah, yes, it's not a profit, you know, it's not intended for that, but it shouldn't be intended to be a loss either. So, as I said, whatever miracle, this number of $409,000, no, $402,000.
Well, if, if you can find out, you know, where that is.
It's, it's on, it's on the website.
Send it, well, website's kind of, if I point to the document or what you're looking at, maybe I can answer the question. You know, other than that, I'd just like to remark, I'm absolutely thrilled that actually someone is reading that document. This doesn't happen that often.
No, nobody reads that stuff, and nobody comes to meetings. That's why we wind up in the pickle we're in.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, there's cause for hope. There's still, because it's not on the agenda, any discussion about Shenandoah Woods.
There's nothing to discuss on it.
Well, you just said there's cause for hope. It, it, this is going on, this is going on as though it's a done deal. If it's not a done deal.
If, if.
Give your own news, Jack.
Yeah, if I could, I, I think the, the way to leave it with Shenandoah Woods is we're looking at all options. We still have some loose ends that we have to address with some legacy deals, and we're hopeful that we can go ahead and put together something which is acceptable to the board and to the community, and at that time, you know, we'll be able to explain it.
Or you said, and to the community, you just said that. So before this is finalized, the community will hear what this is going to be?
Anything which is presented, um, or needs to be acted on by the board by law, has to be discussed in this room at a public meeting.
Well, yeah, that, that, that's true, I know that. Except that you see the public that we have here, and this is a crowd. This is a crowd.
We've been trying. We've been trying. I'm sorry that it's not up to your standards, but we're trying.
Thank you, Jack. Jack, I look forward to this weekend's emails, by the way. I do enjoy, no, I do, I do enjoy emailing back and forth with you. Especially if you can find where that $400,000 is, please send that to me tomorrow.
$402,000?
No, please send that to me, because I'd like to see it as well. Darlene?
I'm Darlene Baker, from 1537 Mulberry Circle. I am a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and I do want to comment on Jack's statement. I think the rec department was not running a deficit when they were able to run the camps in the summertime, and that's really, um, critical, because they were making money at that point. And when that got taken away from them, that did impact the budget line item for, um, the Park and Rec Department. So, I want to make sure that I stand up, because Karen and Kathy do a phenomenal job with the, um, with the limited resources they do have in all the beautiful parks that we have in our system.
I mean, that's where the deficit lies. I mean, we have 400 acres of open space that has to be maintained, and that does come at a cost.
It's huge. We have a lot of beautiful parks that people do take advantage of throughout, uh, Warminster, so I think we have to keep that in mind as well. So, um, I'm here to, um, talk about some fun things. So, the first thing I'm going to do is ask everybody to get out their cell phone, make sure they're on silent, but get out your cell phone and pull up your calendar app, please. So, we have a couple of, um, fun activities planned in Warminster. The first that I want to talk about is Warminster Day, and that is going to be Saturday, June 9th, over at our beautiful Warminster Community Park, and it's going to run from 11 to 4. There, we're going to have lots of fun, games for kids, food trucks for me, um, and, um, lots of entertainment. Uh, one of the big things that we are going to celebrate that day is the 15th anniversary of Warminster Community Park. It's a beautiful park. Lots of people take advantage of it. There's both active space in there, there's passive space. I know people ride their bikes there, take long walks there. It's beautiful. You can see nature. There's deer over there all the time. So, um, we're going to celebrate the 15th anniversary. As part of that, we will do kind of a show and tell of the things that are going to be upcoming with the grant that we're getting. So, I think it'll be fun for you guys to see the upcoming things that are going to be planned for the, um, the park. And that's from grant, um, grant money that we're getting.
Darlene, excuse me, you said 1 to 4 p.m.?
11 to 4.
11.
Everybody come over and eat lunch. There's going to be food trucks over there.
I've been hearing rumors that supervisors will be manning the dunk tank. Is that?
I'm hoping that. That's what I, that's what.
I hear we've been volunteered already, without our knowledge, so.
That's what I heard too. So, get your, get your little speedos out, guys.
I'm very good at annoying people. I'll be glad to do it.
Now, having said that, um, what I, um, so, everybody put on your calendar for, um, June 9th from 11 to 4. And, one of the other things is, we want lots of entertainment and lots of fun games. We have lots of fun activities planned for all the kids over there, but we also want, um, really good at entertainment. And, because of that, we need corporate sponsors. So, I've got the black and white version of a nice brochure that's going to be printed pretty soon, that I'm going to share with all the supervisors to help get corporate sponsors. So if there's any corporations that are listening right now, I don't know where the TV is, hey, guys. What we, we really like some sponsors to, um, have a really fun event for everybody in, um, Warminster.
Excuse me, could we put that on our website there, Greg, to try to get sponsors for that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's going to, I think it is going to go on the website. I think the brochure's been finalized. It's at the printer now, and that can go up on the website, and I think Karen's planning on doing that.
And Karen said she was going to send it to us electronically, so we have it.
We sent it out about a week ago.
Yes, I, I got it. Yeah.
I better double check. I didn't, I probably did get it.
We got it, Mark.
I noticed when you're looking for sponsors that Mr. Kennard is diligently going over his paperwork.
Well, I'm going to give everybody up there. Don't shoot me, guys. I'm going to go live.
Yeah, nice try, Craig. It was already whispered in my ear a long ago, okay?
There's a sponsor sheet for everybody, so supervisors, I'm going to give you each a couple of them. If anybody else wants them, I will have a couple here, but they will be posted on our website very shortly.
Thank you. And while Darlene is doing that, I just wanted to make a comment about the Parks and Rec Department. Uh, Karen Whitney and Kathy do a phenomenal job. I'm liaison to that, to that board. They pinch pennies, uh, they get every, uh, bit of what, of their money. Uh, they do grants, they apply for every single grant that is available, and they do a phenomenal job. And we should be really grateful that we have such a beautiful, beautiful parks that we have to maintain, but they do pinch their pennies. They do a great job.
And people, people like Darlene and Michelle Myers, et cetera, that have volunteered years and years on that board. I got to serve on the board with you guys for several years, and I, I know I'm getting off track here, but I remember telling Karen, I think I'm going to run for supervisor. She said, don't do it. Don't do it. But, but, yeah, the park board's terrific. I had such a good time on the park board. I really, really did.
Yeah, it's a good group of people. All right, now I told you not to put your phone away. If you go on Facebook, there is a Warminster Day celebration, um, event out there. Please make sure that you share that with everybody, and also say that you are going to the event, or at least say you're interested in the event. So, that'll show up on your Facebook page, and everybody else can see that as well, that, that you're friends with. So we want to get all the social media out there, so people do come to the event. And, we really do need sponsors, so if you know any, um, businesses that really want their name out there in Warminster, we really appreciate the sponsorship for that day. All right, the second event, get, keep the phone out, I told you. Also, we have, um, an organization called Friends of Warminster Parks, and that's a 501(c)(3) organization. And, we've been running, uh, an event, not every year, but every couple of years. We have a casino night. It's October 20th at 7:00 p.m. over at Ann's Choice. And we will, I'll be here many times before then to remind everybody about that, but if you could put that on your calendar. That's a really, um, fun event. You don't need to know how to, um, play the card games. There, the group of people there, they help you run their card games, and all the proceeds will go back into, um, the Friends of Warminster Parks. We're an all-volunteer organization, and everything goes back to the park. What, the two projects that we worked on in the past are replacement of all the signs in the, um, park system. All the nice green signs that are out there that are vandal resistant. So when people try to light them on fire, they don't light on fire like the old wooden signs. And then we've, um, had a lot of equipment donated for the skate park as well, through the Friends of Warminster Parks.
Darlene, will you be using the same vendor for the casino night?
Yes.
Great. I have a pile of chips left from last time. I didn't realize I had.
And at the end of the night, you know.
I tried to buy a round with them at the Madison afterwards, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't take them.
So the, the chips at the end of the night, they don't have any value, but you return, you turn the chips in for tickets.
Tickets for the baskets.
And then we have all the, we have wonderful baskets out there. And one of the new things that we're going to be doing, um, this year is, we found an organization that does wonderful silent auction items. I'm actually, um, from the, um, Centennial Education Foundation. I'm going to go on a trip to Africa, um, at the end of March. So, um, that organization runs all kinds of trips for, um, silent auctions. So we're going to be telling you about the different kind of silent, silent auction events that'll be available for people, um, at that event. So, keep your calendars updated. Let's come out and have some fun and support.
The casino night's a good time. The couple of times that you've run it, it's really been fun.
Yeah.
Can try, I encourage everyone to come out. It's a fun night.
Yeah, so everybody has their calendars updated, and we need sponsors for Warminster Days. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you.
Hi, Pat Boyle, Grand Avenue. I know everybody comes up here and yells at you, and I just wanted to come up and thank you, because Hamilton Road is, been cleaned up. The big hole on it from the last meeting, it was like two days later, and they, they did a big patch job on it. And I know the job's not done, but at least nobody will get hurt over the winter, and I greatly appreciate you listening and taking care of it.
We will pass it along to the crew. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Any other public comment?
Ken Hayes, 850 Lingo Drive. Uh, just wanted a couple, um, just wanted to report to the board, uh, what's going on at the, uh, the Environmental Advisory Council. So, first thing is, as you alluded to, Mark, that, uh, we are looking, we have one vacancy. So we're looking for someone in the community, um, that would be interested in serving the community, to send a letter of intent. Uh, the next thing is, the, um, we're sponsoring a backyard bird count at the community park. It's this Saturday, 10 o'clock. Uh, everyone will be meeting at the, um, the rec building right by, in the parking lot. So we're looking forward to having a lot of people show up. It's a great opportunity to see what kind of, uh, natural, uh, resources we have here. And then thirdly, uh, there's plenty of reasons why we need open space in this township. So, um, I heard some people talking about Shenandoah Woods. Uh, we are reviewing the Phase 2, uh, environmental report from Penone, and, uh, we would like to make recommendations to the board about Shenandoah Woods. As, um, in our, excuse me, in the ordinance and the handbooks, that's what the Environmental Advisory Council's charged with. So, um, we have some, we will be talking about it, and we'd love public participation. So our next meeting is, Donna, when is our next meeting? The 28th, I believe, right? Or the 26th?
I knew the 26th at 7:00 p.m.
26th, yes. So we're looking for, we're looking for as much participation from the residents. Uh, we are going to, um, set our agenda for the year. Right here.
The 26th year?
Right here.
At what time?
7:00. 7:00, right here, in this room. Uh, looking forward to seeing everyone from the township, and, uh, we'll explain why open space is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Sure.
Nita Cook, 911 Auto Lane. I know I'm beating a dead horse here. With regards to Shenandoah Woods, months ago, when it was brought up at a township meeting, and I voiced concern, our former township solicitor said, "It's months away. You have nothing to worry about." I go on vacation and miss one meeting, and then all of a sudden, we're buying the package. You all got that email, what, two years ago? Well, maybe you guys didn't, you might not, that it was estimated at $5.5 million for cleanup. That was two years ago. I don't know who used a magic wand and made it less now, and that the whole package, including what was going to Parks and Rec, is now $7 million. We can't afford it. We can't afford it, plain and simple. Can't afford it. I understand open space. I grew up on four acres. I get open space. But, at what cost? At the cost of the pension to the, the police officers who risk their lives every day? At the cost of the future of the township? Because we're in the weeds, man. We really are. And, and you all know it, and if you read the budget, and you're looking at the projections, it's not looking great. Why would we do this to ourselves? We can live without it. Whoever buys it can clean it up. And you guys are saying, it's, it's kind of vague, the reply that Jack got, you know, that it's in the works. Has anyone made any motion to stop the process?
No.
No.
We're in negotiations.
Negotiations to what? Still buy it?
Over various aspects of the deal.
I made a statement earlier. I refer back to that statement.
There's some of this, nothing's done until it's signed.
Okay, because five years from now, when the township's bankrupt?
Right.
You guys are the ones we're going to be looking at.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Have a good night.
Sure, John.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at my notes carefully. John Capozzi, Penrose Lane. One simple thing, uh, on Marion Road, where the new long-stress development is going on, they, um, they took out the sidewalk to put a driveway easement, but they've had that barricaded since, uh, the, the beginning of December. Now, I know it got really cold at, uh, you know, around the first of the year, but, you know, it just seems to me an, an, uh, length of time for that sidewalk to be closed and taped off, and I, I think there's even junk laying in there. I don't know if that's cables or just trash that's laying in there. But, now that we have a little bit of warm weather, if they can complete that section and open up that sidewalk, that would be great.
You're talking about off of Roberts, you said, or Marion?
It's, it's actually off of Mar- Marion and Penrose.
I'll, I'll look into, I'll get that message out.
Because at the same time, they dug that up and, and put, they dug the curb up and put, put the driveway, the driveway, uh, apron in. Not the apron, but the, the driveway curb. They also did the sidewalk on Roberts, and I thought they were just going to follow up and do that apron at the same time. Then it got cold.
Okay.
But now, you know, it's time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, please, Maury.
Marie Brzezinski, 98 Roberts Road. I have to follow up on, about Marion Road. I was here going blue, purple, all kinds of colors when they were doing that. And you remember, and you were shaking your head. Well, let me tell you something. Every day that I have to go on Marion Road, I would like to choke all of you. Let me tell you why. The entire road is a mess. Who is going to pay for the mess that is there now? Are we going to pay as a township? Or is that a scammer that built the homes, that is asking $450,000 for one home? Is he going to fix Marion Road for us? Or we have to borrow money and be broke so we can fix his mess? It's a total mess. Roberts Road is a mess. Marion Road is a mess. His road is a mess. The entire thing is a mess in there. I know the weather has been bad, and I'm sorry about that. But that guy is a scammer. He's doing a horrible disservice to our township. The other thing is, nobody's considering opening all those homes on man's road when we are going to have all those neighbors with three cars in our neighborhood getting in and out. So, I heard Vicky a few minutes ago, on the television, telling us about the amount of traffic that is going to be in Ivyland Road. Nobody has mentioned, and nobody wanted to mention, that we are going to have a supermarket in Ivyland Road with gas station. Nobody has ever mentioned that to these people that are building 42 homes.
I'm pretty sure we have, Marie.
Yeah, wise. Nobody has mentioned that.
We talked about it an hour and a half.
And I never heard one time the word wise. Never heard it once.
Because it's off of York Road, far away from the intersection.
No, 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 everybody will come down, up and down Ivyland Road, perdona me. Excuse me.
We're not going to have a conversation.
Yes, excuse me. Everybody will use Ivyland Road because they will be coming from everywhere. Okay, I wanted to say a couple of things, then I'm going to sit down and talk about the tax. Okay, in reference to the solicitor. You had a solicitor in here that got hired when he was being looked after by the FBI. The guy sat with us for a whole year and the FBI was looking at him. We got the first solicitor in the entire history of this township for the 47 years that I have lived here that is not from Bucks County. And I resent that. He might be a wonderful person, I don't have nothing against him personally. But it's the first time in the history of this township, in 47 years that I have been involved in this township, that that gentleman doesn't belong to Bucks County. How he's going to defend us in Buck County Court, I don't know. But he should have been from Bucks County. Luckily, the other thing I wanted to say is, I appreciate Chris Giuliani, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name right. The intelligencer. Thanks to him, he wrote, I think I wrote the date, of everything that is going on in this township. Same to this young man, we know what is happening in Warminster. Because we read, I signed up to read that township thing. He doesn't tell me anything, in fact, I sat today for an hour and a half to make sure that you were having your meeting today at 7 o'clock. At 7 o'clock, it was a notice on the television saying, pretty soon the township supervisor meeting will be on, which it wasn't. Then it was black and then finally.
Yeah, we had a little technical difficulty at the beginning.
We need to fix that television. I have been saying that for years, of course, in my, in my voice. We need to fix that television, really make it working. And right now I'm going to sit down, but I have more to say later.
Okay.
Take care.
Any other public comment? Sure, but, please.
My name is Larry Zermull, I live over in Delmont. I haven't been to a meeting in a long time and I don't recognize anybody from the last time I was here. But congratulations. I came to the last meeting where the WMA was the discussion point and things like that. And I think there was a lot of things, I just listened while I was there. And my question is going to be really towards the pension that you guys discussed. And just to let you know, I've worked in actuarial firm one time for many years, so I read through the document. And basically, basically a benefit goes, give salary, give years, and you have a multiplier. And this plan has a multiplier of 2.5. How was that multiplier? Who chose that? How was that picked?
It was bargained with, with the unions.
Okay. So, you know, you're the manager, you know basically how they work, right? So basically, when you come down, you do the agent service times that. So, I mean, I just did some math on the back of an envelope real quick and I was going to, and I came up with some pretty big numbers. So looking out in years, assuming that, you know, all the participants are there and they stay in the job and you get to that point, what is the thought process for the funding for that? I got the impression that we were underfunded for the meeting.
Well, right now, we are contributing to the, we have two issues. One, we are using the smoothing method, so we're not putting in what we should be. And we're also using an assumed rate of return of 8%, which is aggressive. Which is aggressive and really, in my opinion, not attainable over the long. Those are two issues which have contributed to some of the underfunding of the pension. To correct that, you know, there's a few ways you can deal with that. One is fund it properly. Another way is go ahead and start looking at reducing or eliminating certain benefits. And the board, back in 2012, 2013, through union negotiations and other decisions, did cap the non-uniform pension. So effective January 1, 2013, all new non-uniform hires are going into a defined contribution pension. So that does obviously provide some measure of relief. What Mr. Diamond was talking about earlier is, his frustration is that per state law, we cannot do the same with police. They are by law mandated to have a defined benefit pension. So that's one aspect. The other aspect is trying to find the appropriate funding. I am happy to say that for the last two years, for 2016 and 2017, we've put in more than we have in the past. In 2016, although we were on the smoothing method, we did make an extra $200,000 or $300,000 contribution, which put us close to the market value method, but still at an 8% rate of return assumed. In 2017, we were able to fund it at market value and get off the smoothing method, again, still at 8%. Unfortunately, for the 2018 budget as is currently enacted, we had returned to the smoothing method due to funding issues.
Is that covered by the PBGC, that plan?
Is it covered by what?
The Pension Benefit Guarantee Corporation?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to look into that. Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Charlie.
So, Ken Hayes, 850 Lingo Drive, this is actually a couple of questions for Mr. Bartle. You're a resident of Pennsylvania, correct?
Yes, sir.
You are licensed to practice law in Pennsylvania, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you were brought on by the board to represent Warminster Township, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Let me, if I can elaborate on my answer a little bit. I know that the, one woman came up and questioned the fact that I don't personally live in Bucks County. And I respect the opinions of all residents that come up and publicly commented, certainly their right to do that. And I respect them with whatever opinion they do have. I do want to make it clear, however, and this was reviewed in the interview process, our law firm has been in the area for 40 years. Our lawyers practice law not only in Montgomery County, where I live, but also in Bucks County, also in Chester County and Delaware County. And our lawyers are in the courthouse in Bucks County, certainly at least every week. And perhaps more frequently than that, and have been for a number of years in all types of specialties. As I indicated, I do zoning and land development work as well as doing municipal work. While I have not represented a community in Bucks County as the municipal solicitor, I have represented EMSs in the county, I've represented zoning hearing boards in the county. I'm very familiar with the rules and regulations of the Bucks County court's system. We do in our office have a number of employees. We have, as I said, about 16 lawyers and then we have our support staff as well. Some of our lawyers and some of our support staffs are Bucks County residents as well. So while I personally may not live here, I do practice here. Our firm members do practice here and we do have members of the firm who live here as well. Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing. I didn't vote for Frank, I would have preferred someone else. But I am 100% confident that Frank can do the job as our solicitor.
Thank you. Sure, Marie.
Again, I didn't have anything against a gentleman. I don't have anything against you. But if I commit a crime and I need a lawyer, and I commit a crime in Buck County, I want a lawyer from Buck County. And that, I have been 25 years in the court as an interpreter. I know what I'm talking about. And you might be the wonderful, most organized and the best company in the world, but you will have to hire somebody from your firm to represent us in Buck County who doesn't know anything about us. That's what you will have to do, right? That's what you just said.
No, I.
That's what he just said.
I didn't say anything like that, I'm sorry.
You said that you have about 60 lawyers working in your law firm.
I said there's 16 lawyers in our firm.
16, okay, I thought it was 16, it's okay. You said there were 16 lawyers in your law firm. Suppose that Warminster Township gets into a situation where they have to go to court.
Yeah, I would do that myself.
Always. 100%.
I wouldn't, I mean, look, there are times, there are times when I'm sick, there are times when I'm unavailable. But this is my client and I would say that I will be here at least as high a percentage as any other lawyer would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just to be clear, the licensing for lawyers is not county based?
That's correct, it's by state.
It's by state, okay.
The gentleman was correct. Okay, any other public comment? Sure.
My dad's on a little holiday, so this meeting's going to be a lot shorter. So I think that, but he did send an email to you guys and he wanted to make sure that you guys had copies of it. And I sent with copies just in case.
We did too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Genevieve, my parents grew up at 558 Ivyland Road.
Yeah. We did get it and Mr. Schuster responded on behalf of the board.
Did he? Okay, great. I was like blind copied on it, but not, when you reply back, I'm not on it. So if you have copies, perfect. And while he's not here, I thought I'd just say a few words to you. Because sometimes it's like hard to talk in front of him, but, but he, so. I don't know if you know, but my parents are like fairly active in Warminster. You know, they've been here for 40 years. So, you know, they met in Ridley Township and they, my dad worked at the naval base. And my mom, while she finished her law degree, then they, then they moved up to Warminster. And my dad is very proud that he moved to Warminster from Ridley. He's like, you know, thinks we're like the Otterados of the North, he's like really quite proud. And so my mom was on the library board, you know, for 20 years and, you know, we, I don't know why I'm getting upset. But, you know, they, they really do care about their property. There's not one floor my dad hasn't finished in that house and, you know, they really care about the town. And they, my dad used to officiate wrestling matches and, you know, we all grew up here when the naval base was closing. My dad was one of the last people at that base because everyone was moving to Pax River. My dad refused to move five kids out of the Centennial School District and to Pax River. And so we stayed and he went back to school just to get his teaching degree and ended up going to Lockheed and Martin. And he traveled an hour and 15 minutes every day commuting, refusing to move out of Warminster because he had put down every piece of, you know, wood in that house himself. And, you know, just really does take pride in the community. And so sometimes when he's speaking, I know he sounds, and I hope he doesn't eventually watch this, but he doesn't. But he, you know, he's not just, what is that, the Dr. Seuss and the truffle of tree? You know, he's not just saying things just to not have a road pour out onto his driveway, but because he actually does care, you know, that, you know, it's, it's just, it's a part of him, the town is now a part of him. And, you know, my mom, I got engaged under the tree across the street and my mom, when she was sick, my dad took care of her in that house. And, you know, it's, it sounds so stupid, but it is true that Ivyland Road is considered a, just an easy way to get from Murn's Road to York Road. And people use it just to, you know, get back and forth really quickly. But it is a little scary when you're backing out, my sister's car got ruined and, but he, so he's not just being crazy. He's actually a really intelligent person who's like just trying to convey to you, you know, that that one in and out is really not safe. If something happens to the first house, you know, how is someone going to get out of the rest of the houses? And there's perfect, the other three inlets were made just for that completion of the farm eventually. And, what was I going to say? Make sure I covered everything. Thank goodness, I'm not, I'm not reading all of this.
Genevieve, you're just very passionate, as your parents are, and your father always comes off very well.
I'm so glad.
And you have every right, I've lived here, you know, for a very, I've been here now for 35 years. And we feel the same way about living here and that's why I'm doing the job I'm doing here now. So please don't be upset. You have every right to say how you feel.
I think I just often get nervous, there's like five people here and I'm very nervous.
You're passionate, I love that about you.
But, you know, and actually, we've been looking a lot into the township plan. I don't know if you've read through it, but it's, it had hoped that the farm would eventually become, and I have copies of that to give you too. But, you know, I know Gilmore and Associates had written up a whole piece about it. That, well, Gilmore and Associates had actually said that no recreational facility was going to be built into that area. And that one can be built somewhere further, but in all honesty, you know, I grew up in that neighborhood. We used to go to Murphy's Swim Club, which is now housing. And then we used to walk up to, we went to school at Long Stretth and then on the off days, we could, you know, use the, use the facilities there. But now that's a development. And I worked at the naval base myself, at the recreation center, at the pool, that was my first job. And, but now it's Anne's Choice and you can't, there's no pool there anymore. So, you know, all these things, I think for that particular neighborhood, when you don't have a car, we might have a lot of public land in Warminster, but I think it would be difficult for someone in that neighborhood to find a place to play as a kid. You know, if there's, you know, all these new homes, both at Long Stretth and across the street, then, you know, where are they going to go? And I guess they have to be bused to an elementary school. And, you know, when you're talking about how busy that road is, you know, is the, for my dad, you know, is the traffic study going to be done based on the Long Stretth development, based on also the, down the corner where Kmart used to be? Like, are all these things taken into account when you're doing that traffic study? Or is it happening at the same time and not being taken into consideration and kind of closed doors? And so they were very, you know, he's very concerned and I think he has a right to be. But also, and a little quick note, so that lack of recreational facilities. But then that comprehensive plan that was set forth by the town where it said.
Can I comment on that real quick? Can I go one second?
Oh, yeah. Am I talking too much?
No, no, no.
Within my five minutes, I have a little timer on.
We have all night, we have all night.
Look, it's, our last meeting went to 12:15, we got four and a half hours.
We sat there, I was like, couldn't you do ours first? Okay, no, okay.
Just, just a note on the comprehensive plan. And it's, I'm glad you're looking at it, really glad. We are in the process of redoing it, it's going to, there's a new one coming out in probably about the end of March or April. You may want to get information on our next meeting, so.
Come to the meeting. Everybody's invited to come.
Because we're pretty.
Tuesday.
Just Tuesday.
We're.
February 20th at 7:00 P.M.
February 20th. Better got my phone in.
Because we're, we're pretty far down the path on that plan. And public input is always welcome at every meeting. But I just, I wanted to make you aware that that plan that, as you have now, will be possibly superseded should the Board of Supervisors adopt a new comprehensive plan that's currently being drafted.
Okay, regarding the farm or the development of the farm itself?
It's, I don't, I don't believe in this plan, there is anything particular about the farm.
No.
Whereas the, sort of the thinking behind the planning, and Ms. Zimmerman, please correct me if I'm wrong, was that they, they were trying to not target specific properties with, with the comprehensive plan as not to tie the hands of anyone in the future. So I don't think there's, I don't think there's a section that says, "And at the Dowager's Farm property." But still, your input, there's still time to put input into this plan. And I would encourage you to come to that meeting or, or, there's a couple more meetings.
Oh, good, good.
Please be welcome.
Because I know Ms. Zimmerman had mentioned, when we talked, that, that there wasn't another plan being considered, you know, when we chatted.
For the conditional use, there was not another plan.
For the, the road inlet, you know, just the one way?
The only plan that I had and that the board considered from the developer was the conditional use plan that was discussed at the January 18 meeting that the board took action on. There was no other plan proposed to us. And they were looking at the layout in front of them and the approval of the, having 42 houses. So I don't have another plan, there's never been another plan presented to us to look at.
Yeah, should one be required, though? That's what I think my dad's trying to say.
You know, so I think we have a few things going on here. Right now, what the board did is at the last meeting, they had a conditional use hearing. Testimony was taken, evidence was received. The board did take a vote and voted to grant the conditional use. The conditional use was strictly related to going from, you know, the by right plan of 36 homes to 42 homes. That's the sole thing that it was about. The only thing on the agenda tonight, on our consent agenda, is the written decision that was drafted by the solicitor memorializing that vote. So the issues that you're referring to are completely valid and they need to.
For future, like for down the road.
Therefore, when the land development process comes forward through the preliminary final land development, they should absolutely be discussed and, and if there's differing points of view, hopefully it can be worked out with the developer. If not, you always retain the right to go ahead and appeal if you disagree with the decision of the board. But it's going to go through the Planning Commission and eventually to this board. So there's going to be multiple opportunities to provide input and be part of the process. But the only thing that has been before this board is the conditional use application related to whether it's the by right of 36 homes or going up to 42 homes.
Or any homes at all? Is that what, you know, is. Or any homes at all, is that what, you know, is the conditional use approving, tonight, like, you decide, like, it's written down, and you're saying, check mark, you know, this has been approved, the, turning that farm into homes?
No.
The conditional, so...
Like changing the zoning from...
No, we never change the zoning.
There's no changing of the zoning, so...
It was always residential?
Yes, so they always have, so if they came in with a by-right plan, and said, "We wanna do thirty-six houses," we wouldn't even had a conditional use hearing, there would have been no need for it, they could have gone right to land development. But because in our zoning code, we have a provision which allows them to request, um, you know, more housing per acreage, they came in through the conditional use as provided in the zoning code, and asked for that, and also said what they would do to offset that, and that's why, and that's what the board did grant that evening with, with their vote.
Yeah, you know, I, I was, I was there for that, and then, you know, was going through all the conditional use, like, what, you have to be sure before you grant that conditional use, and I felt like there were, you know, a couple of pieces of it that maybe didn't have all the information that could have been voted on, um, you know, like it says that, um, well, not to like read you the conditional use, you know, but, you know, it says that it has to, um, be in harmony with the neighborhood, and provide like a safe traffic environment, and increase the values of the homes of, of the homes around it, but, you know, could you have voted on something without all the information there, you know, like, did, did we find out, before you granted that conditional use, is that the houses won't lose value, even though they're across from a farm, and now they're gonna be across from more houses with the forty-two cars coming at them, or, you know, like, is it with harmony with the neighborhood, like, did we check with the neighbors? And, you know, I think like a lot of the...
I think harmony with neighborhood does not mean with the neighbors.
Is it like the look of the house?
Quite honestly, yeah, I think it means.
The, the board, the board at that hearing took testimony, you know, party status was granted to a number of people, including your father.
Yeah, yeah.
They were, um, available to go ahead and present their own testimony, they were available to present their own expert witnesses, and build a record, the hearing that night was, was closed, and the board made a decision.
Right, you know, um, my dad and I have been talking a lot on the, am I over five minutes?
No, I say it was on TV tonight.
Oh. But, you know, actually, it wasn't communicated to him that it was gonna be like a hearing where he should have presented evidence, and that was the first time that he actually did see a lot of the evidence that was presented, and he did make a point afterwards that he didn't have, the first time that you guys heard, um, about the, um, traffic study was the first time he heard about it, and so he didn't get a chance to even review the information, let alone respond to it, and then, a lot of the information, where we went to go get it from the attorney about that traffic study, she said it wasn't actually anything in writing or anything that could be produced, it was testimony on someone's opinion, although the testimony was based on only sitting on the street for, uh, one hour, twice a day, for one day. So I'm like, I was like, is it testimony, or is it someone's opinion that was hired by the farm itself?
And I'm sorry, all I can tell you is that there was a hearing, it was closed, if you disagree with the board's decision at this point, really all you can do is file an appeal.
And the appeal, I think you have to actually have a, quite a bit of collateral to, to do so.
Well, you have to have a written decision, which is what the board is voting on this evening.
Yeah, but then when you write the decision, and then you say, uh, if I wanted to, well, if my dad wanted to refute it, he'd have to put up quite a bit of money, I think, and, uh...
I don't believe, I mean, there's a, we, there's a transcript that, um, you know, could be produced, but other than that, you could take it to the court system, I would advise you to seek legal counsel if you do so.
At three hundred and fifty dollars an hour, we did, so it's like, well, you know, but, um, I just feel like when, when that decision was made, I think that, I don't think due diligence was put forth into the, um, into, um, the conditional use requirements that the board should have looked into, um, I think that it wasn't in the best interest of the township, it wasn't convenient to the community, and it wasn't in public welfare.
See, when...
But we're the neighbors, so...
You're the neighbors, and I agree with that, honestly, I think, look, I've talked to members of the board, we've all, since that first meeting, we've all talked about the concerns, particularly of the, of your father's concerns that he brought up, with the neighbors in, in general. Land development, honestly, is where a lot of this is, I think, is where it's gonna come out, whether, if, if we can find a solution that's going to, to work within that community, otherwise, I mean, there's, there's, tonight's conditional use does not mean there's going to be a development on Doutch's Farm, it means that they can submit a plan for development that has forty-two homes in it.
Okay.
And then, I'll be honest, that land development, I understand, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm not representing any of my other board members, that, I think it's gonna be a contentious land development through the entire process, because a lot of people are gonna have opinions, which they should, and I can already tell you that, speaking, and I want to vote who I spoke to on the board, we're already asking, can we find ways to meet the, to meet some of the desires, I, I don't know if we're gonna be able to get a hundred percent of what everybody wants, but can we get somewhere?
Yeah.
Can we find ways, and trust me, that is, it is being considered, tonight's, uh, with the conditional use, I understand where you're coming from, we can, we had to make a decision on the information that was presented to us during that hearing, and, and, and we made that decision, the report will come, uh, the, the written decision will come out tonight, and, and we can go from there with that, but I think land development is really, not only are you, are, are you guys fighting from a particular point of view, trust me, all five of us up here have heard it, we are not, we are not, not processing what you're saying, we are having discussions about it. We just, we don't have the answers yet, and honestly, what's gonna happen is, as it goes through the process, and we start giving feedback to the Township Administration, they're gonna try to work with the developer, try to get something, I don't think the plan that you saw that night's gonna be the plan that's presented to us, that's just my opinion, I don't know that for certain. I haven't talked to the developer or the lawyers.
Yeah.
But I, I do, I do wanna stress, we hear you, I, I know sometimes with the process, and Mr. Schuster's answering the questions in the way he must answer this question, but we are, we are very sensitive to what's going on, am I out of line on any of that?
Not at all.
I agree, I agree, and the best thing that I would suggest is to go to the Planning Commission meetings, when they talk about a lot of these aspects, and we can change, when, then we'll come to our board, we can change some of the conditions. We're saying, okay, we want a recreational area there, or what have you, but it's just in the initial stages right now. To be honest with you, I'm upset we're losing the last vestige of the farm and our, and our township, but we can't afford to buy the property, and they have every right to sell.
I don't think they wanna sell it, too.
Right, so if anybody wants to buy it, you know, no, but, I mean, that's, that's where, none of us want to see it.
I think that that was honestly the concern, because then it sounded like we...
Yeah, we're kinda digressing here, we're into a long drawn-out hearing here.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I don't mean to cut you off, but we're talking about land development here.
Right.
When we're not even to that juncture.
I, you know, I know, but I feel like when you start early on, you can really, you know, it's not just like, this is the only plan that's gonna be put into place, sort of conversation, but, you know, I honestly, yeah, I'm, I feel like I support someone being able to, you know, sell their property and, and make money off of their income, but not squeeze in as many houses as...
And I'm extremely, I'm extremely concerned about that entrance as well, but I'll address that at land development.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Same, actually, maybe it was just as long as he was here. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr....
More public comment? Oh, you're raising your hand, sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight's consent agenda is as follows, item A, consider approval of your minutes for the January eighteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting, item B is the annual request and authorization for myself to attend the professional development conferences, APMM and ICMA, item C is approval of the PA One Call proclamation, this would be recognizing April as...
Uh, one, one meeting, please, Dave, please, one meeting, please.
My birthday.
Go ahead, Mr. Schuster.
Is recognizing April as Pennsylvania eight-one-one Safe Digging Month, item D is considering approval of the Crown Castle Site Agreement Amendment for sublease, this is a agreement which, I think, predates most people here, that's in association with a local church and a cell tower, uh, the end result is, we will get a little bit more money out of the lease every single month, um, item E is, consider adopting Resolution two thousand eighteen dash ten, which is the execution of a traffic signal application associated with William Tennant's desire to establish a school zone in front of the high school, that would consist of signs and markings, item F is the request for authorization to advertise the curb ramp installation contract for the two thousand eighteen road improvement plan, item G, along with that, is the request for authorization to advertise the roadway milling contract for the two thousand eighteen road improvement plan, the roads of which are specified in the memo that's been prepared, and it's in your packet, item H is the approval of the conditional use decision and order for twelve-seventy Murns Road, and item I is release number twelve from the escrow for the Hart School redevelopment in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars as recommended by the engineer.
Okay, um, just one quick question before I ask for a motion, uh, the road program, we will get a presentation from Eric Hines at some point of...
I wasn't planning on one, but I certainly could bring him in.
We'd like to see that, yeah, at some point, yeah, we would.
Let me ask this question, though, would you be considering changing roads, because, okay, because I was saying, that's not advertised right now.
No, we'd like to...
Public likes to...
Absolutely, I, I had intended for Eric to come in sometime in April or May to talk about CIP, so around that timeframe, I could also do the roads as well, if that'll work for everybody.
Just so he could identify what roads, so the folks know what roads are gonna be getting done this summer.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, um, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board on the consent agenda? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, who carries, next up is finance report, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you have the transfers and bills list, so I would ask for a motion to approve the transfers, the bills list, bill list dated February twenty, uh, February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, one, sorry, one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and one dollars and twenty-two cents, the supplemental, and the supplemental bill list dated January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, six, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr., Ms. Frescatore, any further discussion from the board on the motion, any from the public? Seeing none, I call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, unfinished business.
Uh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, there's still the financial statement.
All right, give us the financial statement.
Yeah, uh, there's really nothing noteworthy to report, it's the, it's a January statement, so, uh, everything is as expected. Obviously, the revenues are, are very low, because we haven't gotten to the tax collection process yet, but nothing noteworthy to report, since it's very early.
Okay, next up is unfinished business, consider two thousand and eighteen amended budget, Mr. Schuster, I'm gonna give this to you real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as you recall, in the last meeting, um, you did, um, pass a motion to advertise the amendment of the two thousand and eighteen budget, uh, this is something that's allowable by the second-class Township Code, uh, every other year, it is allowable when a new board takes over after an election. You took advantage of this, and warned a, or noticed a budget, um, which was consistent with the memo which I put out, which would increase the total mill rate, uh, three point six one mills, uh, that would be split between, uh, both the debt service account, debt service fund, and the park and rec fund, reasons for which are outlined in the memo that was prepared for you. So, it has been properly advertised, uh, the board may adopt it this evening, uh, or the board may take no action. If you took no action or rejected it, uh, the, the budget that you previously adopted in December of last year would remain in effect.
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to adopt the amended budget for two thousand and eighteen, is there a second? No second, motion fails due to a lack of second, so, uh, the only comment I'm gonna have, and I think Mr. Monroe had a comment as well, is that we, we really have to do some homework for next year, we have some tough decisions to make here, Shannon Dell Woods is one of them, and, uh, that's, that's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna pass, I know, Mr. Monroe, you had a few comments in, in a moment, Marie.
Thank you.
I do, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I'm gonna start off, I'm just gonna read a statement, and then I'm gonna go in, and I'm gonna make a motion, uh, for the board's consideration, um, so, and when I refer to Wei, I did speak to Ms. Frescatore, so she's included in the statement, but is not the entire board, um, so just to borrow a, a quote, governing crisis to crisis is not governing, by voting or allowing the smaller tax raise today to fail, we're not saying that we oppose a, a tax raise in the future, but what we do oppose is any action that does not create a long-term solution to the ongoing budget crisis, for too long, our township has governed year-to-year without a long-term plan, and for too long, our township, uh, has been financially strangled as a result, uh, and, I should say, and as a result, passed up great opportunities to drastically improve our township, we believe that multiple plans need to be formulated, and that every plan that we do consider all need to achieve the same results, and that is a long-term solution to our budget crisis and systemic issue, I would like to make a motion, uh, that this board create a budget committee. Uh, the committee would consist of at least five township residents, those township citizens, uh, who are appointed by the Board of Supervisors should be accountants, financial consultants, or have at least five years of equivalent experience. I recommend that this committee be charged with the creation of a minimum of three to a maximum of five long-term plans, and all plans should present long-term solutions to our budget crisis and our systemic budget issue, which is the underfunded pensions. I recommend that this committee not consist of any Board of Supervisors members, and should only take direct, uh, direction from the Township Manager and those individuals that he feels necessary to assist the committee. Upon formulating budget plans, I believe that the committee should make a recommendation as to their preferred plan, and the committee should then sub, uh, submit their proposals to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. I believe the creation of this committee will have several positive impacts for the community, uh, it will give more residents a voice in the long-term direction of our township, and it will remove political influences, thus creating a more bipartisan atmosphere. A positive atmosphere is essential to create the conditions necessary to generate ideas that will lead us out of this crisis.
I agree with Mr. Monroe, the gentleman in the back there, you might be interested in applying for that, you seem to know pretty much about finances, and we need, we have a lot of smart cookies in this township, I know people would be willing to volunteer to, to help us, uh, in this crisis, and so that's why Mr. Monroe and myself, uh, came, came up with this particular idea.
Let me ask you this, I don't, I, I'm totally on board with what you wanna do, and this is the first I'm hearing of it.
Right.
Should we consider this for our next meeting as a resolution, or, or formation of an ad hoc committee, or, I mean, to just do this?
Uh, I mean, you can do it however you'd like, if you'd like to do it on the fly, you certainly have that right, if you'd like to take a little time, draft some language about what the specific duties and responsibilities of this committee would be.
That's what I think I'd like to do.
You could put that in a resolution as, as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think that needs to be done, um, and to specifically spell out how it's gonna be put together, I mean, I think that we can, my motion is just to agree to go down this route.
Consider it.
Consider it.
I mean...
Is it a consensus?
Can I, can I say that?
Well, how about, how about if, if you do it this way, this might, this might help you, how about if you direct the staff to put together a statement that includes the thought process that you've just articulated with regard to the appointment of individuals, and what you want to have accomplished through that board, and that way, in putting together that statement, you'll have something tangible that you can actually vote upon, and I think that's where Mr. McKee was going with the idea of a resolution, so, if you direct the staff to put together that resolution for you, I think we've gotten the, the import of what you've suggested, Brian.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think what...
Go ahead, no, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, I think what you're trying to talk about is, it's a, it's a finance and budget committee, and before I was a member on this board, I actually served on the Budget and Finance Committee, and I think the key component to a Budget and Finance Committee, it, we have workshops, for budget season, we have workshops, we're open to the public, and board members can come, but it's really for the Budget and Finance Committee people to talk to the people and get input, and take that input and convey that to the Board of Supervisors, um, we had one in the past, I don't see any reason why we can't have one for, and I would recommend Paul Luft, when I served on the Budget and Finance Committee, Paul Luft was the chairman, he did an excellent job, Paul, I don't know if you're listening right now, but, um, I would recommend Paul Luft to serve on that. So how do we get to where we wanna go?
Well, I, I think you, you direct the staff to put together the thought process in writing for the board's consideration, and we'll have the opportunity of, of putting that out to each of the board members before the next meeting, so that you can make comments on it, and when you come in here, hopefully it's a finished product for your consideration.
Is that your motion, is that your motion?
Great idea.
Yes, Mr. Monroe's motion, a second?
Yes.
Ms. Frescatore, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public?
Yes.
Please, Marie?
Yeah, I have, I, I'm sorry, uh, I wanted to thank him, because he wasn't willing to vote for the last time that the board talked about a tax increase.
I didn't vote for the last time.
And I appreciate, well, in the paper said that he was the one that, I think I read.
All right, it's irrelevant, let's...
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was getting lost, because I was reading the papers of the new business, and I don't know where you were, and all of the sudden...
Number seven.
We were everywhere. Page, second page, new business, A, B, C, D, right?
Unfinished business, Marie.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
Consider two thousand and eighteen amended budget, that was the only thing you were arguing about, okay.
Yes.
So that was the one point. I appreciate that you guys are going to increase the taxes as of today. The other thing is, when you were reading the people and their, how do you say? When you were reading who you wanted to be on those, it was only people with numbers. You, you were saying accountants.
Right.
It can be an engineer in our township that knows how to read a budget and say, and do a budget. It can be a mother that raised seven children, took them to college, so.
Well, that can be open for discussion.
Right.
On the board, I mean, I, I just think that.
Right, I think it was very cohesive.
Well, Marie, I think Mr. Monroe's angle, and I totally agree with him, is that he wants to take the politics out of it.
Right.
Am I right?
You're right.
Okay, the politics have nothing to do with the fact that anybody's good enough to.
That's right.
To work on a budget.
Anybody that's qualified, we're welcome to it.
Yes, that's the point.
That's, that's why the.
Thank you very much, Mrs.
The equivalent experience, you know, that's why I threw that in.
The other question on the motion?
Yes, real, real quick, John Capozzi, Penrose Lane. Mr. Monroe had mentioned no board of supervisors on that. I would suggest that you at least have a liaison, and preferably one with accounting experience to this committee. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment on the motion, please?
I just want to make a comment, are we after the motion?
Is it on, is a comment on the motion?
No, when you finish the motion.
After we vote, after we vote? Okay. We, it's a crazy night.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is.
I thought we'd be done at eight o'clock.
Ken Hayes, eight fifty linger drive, I, I think this is a great idea because, I mean, we've heard some, some comments like it was a paper cut. It's not really there, but obviously, we have a problem.
Ken, let me stop you there. When I said paper cut, I was comparing the idea of selling the water authority. The amount of money that we would get from the sale of a water authority would be far more than what we would need to pay off the, the deficit in the, in the, in the pension. So I was saying that we were trying to, it was akin to using plastic surgery on a paper cut. It was not said in, in saying that our problems are like a paper cut. I just wanted to clarify that. I understand where you're going with that, but I just wanted to make clear.
Right, right, okay. Well, and, and thank you for clarifying that. However, I think we do have a serious problem, and I think this is, this is a good, a good step forward, so.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other comment on the motion? Hey, see, now I'm going to call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion carries, so will the staff, you'll, you'll have some direction for us. And I think it would be appropriate for the staff to keep us posted leading up to the next meeting of where we are.
What I intend to do is put together a draft and circulate it, and see if there's any opinion, and, and take, reconcile your comments as, as best I can, as they don't conflict with each other.
I'll give you a copy.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think, I think our tax collector would like to say a word. I know we're breaking from, breaking out of the.
Mark, may I just say one thing, Mr. Chair? I just want to thank all my fellow supervisors for, for agreeing to this, because we're in a real mess, and we need help here. And I'm, and we're thinking, maybe this might be a solution for us, and thank you to the staff for wanting to craft something for us in the future. Thank you so much.
This, I know this is separate from the agenda, but I think the tax collector wants to go home.
I do.
That's what I thought.
I do. I thank you very much for letting me speak. Bobby Loftus, Warminster Tax Collector. For eighteen years, I was able to get the tax bills out early. They always got them a week before they were dated. Don't expect that this year. Because of the lateness of you passing your budget, the taxes, bills will not go out until March first. I've been getting calls all week wondering where their, their tax bill is, because they've always gotten it early. So don't expect it, it'll be mailed March first.
Tell them to blame me, Ms. Loftus.
I did.
I'll be waiting for the phone calls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, on to new business. Consider appointment to the Pension Investment Advisory Committee, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to appoint Ken Hayes.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Ms. Frescatore, any discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Consider appointment to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, and I know I had met, touched on this earlier. This is traditionally an appointment that's, that's, it's a member that's sent from the Centennial School District. I know we don't do it by ordinance, but it's always been of the understanding that the school district has a seat in the park board, because we use the park, the school facilities for certain activities. So they, they have a designee who's on our agenda tonight for our approval. Did I cover that right?
Yes.
Okay. Consider appointment of Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, is there a motion?
Motion to, to appoint Amy Sanchez-Hamilton.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Monroe, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up, consider appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Bob Welsh for the Economic Development Committee.
Is there a second on Mr. Welsh?
I'll second it.
Any discussion from the board?
Um, Bob is the appointment as a business owner. Bob's the owner of DW Construction, and he's a resident of Warminster for over twenty-five years.
Excellent, excellent. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. So I want to welcome, welcome you again, people that have volunteered again, Mr. Schuster. I guess we won't be necessary to send out notices to everyone, the appointees are in the room tonight.
Well, we still do it.
But thank you all for stepping up and volunteering. And there's some pretty big shoes to fill for the school district, too, John, he's a heck of a guy. Next up is consider approval of golf lease agreement, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the golf carts at Five Ponds. Our current lease agreement is coming to an end. For those who are not aware, the carts that we have there are leased, they are not owned by us. We have looked at all of our options. Mr. Attar, who's in the audience today with Spirit Golf, has gone ahead and, and done quite a bit of due diligence, even got to the point where he invited us over for a test drive, which Mr. McKee actually took part in. So we were able to test drive a, a few models. The model that's being recommended is actually a, a little bit more expensive than some of the other models. It is still within budget, but it's about six thousand dollars more than we pay per year right now. The reason for the increase is, is for two reasons. One, it's a quiet car, so it creates less noise, obviously, which we think is an added benefit for the golf course. And second, because of that feature, it actually uses less gasoline, which is something that would obviously be looked on favorably by Environmental Advisory Council. So we're recommending that you go ahead and approve the golf cart lease agreement for a four-year term. And for your information, this was done through Co-Stars, so it was properly bid that way.
We still can't use them for the parade, though.
Well, you're going to have a final lease come to you, and we're going to look at the terms and conditions at the lease. I would say it's doubtful that we'll be able to use them for the parade.
Will we slip that in there?
Whatever happens, we will find a way to, to get you mobile at the parade.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Hey, is there, is there a motion to, to execute the lease agreement?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second?
Second.
Mr. McPhillips, any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next up is item E, consider approval of Spirit Golf agreement, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that we've been trying to put together since December. A number of obstacles has gotten in our way. Fortunately, just finalized today. Copies were replaced out there and put in your packet, so I apologize for the lateness of, of getting it to you. But Rob from the solicitor's office has been, or Bob, I should say, has been working diligently on this. As you know, we decided not to renew the food and beverage vendor that we had at Five Ponds, and go with Spirit Golf. Spirit has been doing a phenomenal job with the golf operations over at Five Ponds. We are in the black over the last couple of years, we have been running at profit there. However, we felt that there was a lot more improvement that could be made on the food and beverage side. So this agreement does a couple of things. One, it puts Spirit Golf, and when I say Spirit Golf, they're actually going to incorporate another entity underneath them called Five Ponds LLC?
Golf Management.
Five Ponds Golf Man, Management. That will be the actual legal entity that's handling this. They will take care of all operations there, both on the golf side and on the food and beverage side. They already had at least one event over there, which I understand was successful. But we are very interested in moving forward with some renovations, and really taking advantage of that clubhouse. It is a great venue. It's not a venue where you're going to have a huge event, but you're going to have some great events there, and we'd like to go ahead and, and try to go ahead and make that as, as profitable as we possibly can. Along with this arrangement, Spirit Golf would also be taking on the ownership of all employees. So we, at the moment, there's a management agreement where they manage our employees. That would not, that would not happen in the future. All employees would be employees of Spirit Golf. So that's the agreement that's before you. It is a five-year agreement. However, we did incorporate a mutual clause in there, which would allow for six months' notice for termination for any cause.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to consider the approval of the agreement with Spirit Golf.
Motion.
Ms. Frescatore, second?
I'll second.
Okay, for discussion from the board, I just have a couple of comments. I, I think that Spirit does a terrific job of managing that golf course. And one other component that we didn't mention in this agreement is, we have a heck of a lot of billing that goes through our finance department for the golf course, for food, for alcohol, for beverage.
Payroll.
Payroll, all of that will be moved off of our books and on the Spirit Golf. And it's, it's a tremendous gain for the township that we get that off of our books while we're still generating revenue from the golf course. And we look forward to generating a whole lot more revenue. I know Mr. Chair is in the audience tonight, but they do a terrific job of running that golf course. I've been to golf outings there. I know people that run golf outings, that have golf outings, that you run for them, that say nothing but the best about your operation, so. Is there any other comment? Any from the public? Sure, well, John.
Again, real quick, I'm not a golfer, so I trust your opinion on this.
I'm not either.
But I am concerned about the employees. Will they be retained? Is there, I know you said there was a six-month separation, but will they be retained, or is there going to be a wholesale?
Sure.
Layoff and, and rehiring?
So the six-month separation has nothing to do with the employees, that's just in case us and Spirit Golf decide, for whatever reason, we want to part ways. In terms of the employees, and I don't want to put words in, in Mr. Attar's mouth, because we've, there's nothing binding, but I believe he is taking on the majority of employees, not all, but the majority of, of our current employees.
Okay, because I, I am concerned about, you know, people losing their jobs because of this, so.
The intent is actually, if everything goes correctly, you're going to have more need for labor over there, because we want to build up that food and beverage business, we want to have more events over there, which means more bartenders, more servers, more cooks, you, you name it. So if everything goes as planned, I believe that they're going to be employing more people than we, we employ now, or at least having more hours. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Attar?
That's always good, thank you.
I don't know if you want, yeah.
Yeah, sure, come on up, Mike.
Thank you, and thank you for that comment, sir.
Tell us who you are.
Mike Attar with Spirit Golf, and the president of the company. And we, we've been working with the club now for four years, and so the employees that we work with, we're very familiar with. So we've, we have some of our employees and some of the township employees, so it's not like we're coming in new, we're going to, you know, make a, a change in employment. So we look forward to, to moving forward, and, and as Mr. Schuster said, there, there will be a need as we increase the F and B operations to employ more, more people. So we're excited about that, and we look forward to, to taking it all under Spirit Golf, be able to, to provide the township with a continued, you know, operation that we've done with the golf, to move it into the F and B as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attar. Is there any other comment from the public on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mike. Next up is consider advertisement of the Business Privilege Tax Ordinance Amendment. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I'll, I'll take FNG together, if, if I may, because they're essentially the same.
Please do, sure.
The, the first, of course, having to do with the business privilege tax, and the second having to do with the mercantile tax. The first thing I'd like to do is just mention the, the difference between the two of them. They're, they're actually both taxes on gross receipts. The mercantile tax deals with goods, wares, merchandise, and restaurant food and drink, and food and drink from other activities. The business privilege tax has to do with taxes on services. So they're essentially the same tax, they're just on different, different components of the, of the economy. The, in two thousand and ten, Warminster amended its business privilege tax and mercantile tax ordinances to change from a July first fiscal year to a January first calendar year basis. Even though they made that change, the township did not change the annual deadlines for the filing, although in practice, it has, it has been amended. The, the estimated returns were to be submitted under the prior law in September, and the final returns were to be submitted in August. We have drafted an ordinance amendment for each to change the deadline for both types of returns to April fifteen, the date preferred by Burckheimer, who is our tax administrator. So that just puts the, the date of the, of the returns in conformance with the, the calendar tax year that we're taxing for, as opposed to the old fiscal year. As you, as you know, the, the mercantile tax and the business privilege tax have been eliminated, other than those that are grandfathered. Ours was grandfathered, meaning that it was in existence prior to nineteen eighty-eight, and we were allowed to continue to do it, and, and continue to be allowed to do it. Those communities that did not have either of these taxes before nineteen eighty-eight were not permitted to, to pass them after nineteen eighty-eight. So you want to make sure that you don't do anything with respect to the tax rate that would eliminate the, the, the ability of the township to maintain the tax. And we've not done that. Ours is the, the change that I've mentioned, and only the change that I've mentioned. And we attempted to be surgical in our drafting approach to minimize the risk of an argument that we've lost our grandfather status. We've added language to the legal and savings clause to ensure an understanding that the amendment does not change the tax rate itself, and that if a court determines that this amendment invalidates the, the existing tax, the ordinance shall be considered invalid, and the previous existing tax shall survive. So we've sort of done it belt and suspenders, we're not making such an amendment that would eliminate the tax. And by the same token, we've reserved in our, in our savings clause that in the event that there was such a determination, that the ordinance would fail and the tax would survive. So that's the reason for the language that's, that's in your, in your two ordinances, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to, to advertise both amendments, then, correct?
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Mr. McPhillips, second?
Second.
Mr. Crowley, any further discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The next up is professionals reports, but I wanted to save this till later, but I think this is the appropriate time, because normally, when we get into later on in the meeting, everyone's gone. Mr. Schuster has talked trash on this board for the entire year about how great his Patriots are, if they're even lucky enough to. I don't know why you guys are making plans for a parade, because I don't feel that it's necessary. I think we saw in one of the emails, anyway.
I did say that.
We, we had, we had a small wager, and Mr. Schuster said, "Look, I win, you wear my tie." And I said, "Well, I've had this hat, I think, since I was in the fifth grade." So I said, "Well, guess what, if the Eagles win, you're going to have to wear the hat." So I'm going to ask you to put it on while you do the manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to hear an Eagles chant?
Yeah, well, I, I was going to ask for a motion to ask Mr. Schuster to do the Eagles chant.
I didn't even know the Eagles.
Mr. McPhillips? Ah, well.
Come on, you know.
Just spell it. I, I, I will say this, you know, I. I, you know.
You look great.
I, I grew up in Connecticut, not to, you know, about an hour and change away from a, a magical place called Foxborough, Massachusetts. Which, of course, led me to be a, a, a fan, a lifelong fan of the five-time Super Bowl champion New England Patriots. So it's been a little difficult being down here. And yes, I did make a wager, and I'm fulfilling the wager, because as Patriots fans, we will not cheat. So, so, so with that, I, I concede, and I congratulate the Super Bowl champion Philadelphia Eagles, and Philly, Philly.
I think there's a motion on the floor, and I think the board's going to help you do the chant, so. Let's give it, ready?
E-A-G-L-E-S Eagles!
I think I saw his lips move.
You honor your losses, so I appreciate it.
Hey, take this off now, 'cause it's hot as hell.
Sure is hot here.
Jeez.
Yeah. We're gonna get that picture up. I'd like that picture up on the website, too, by the way.
There's gonna be a lot of people who are gonna get a lot of mileage out of that. Township managers' report. First off, just let everyone know, offices will be closed on Monday due to President's Day. And I know Mr. Monroe talked about this earlier, but I also wanna thank everyone that was involved in the preparations for the Eagles Parade. We had several thousand people descend on Warminster very early in the morning to take one of the few available direct service services, trains to the city. And we almost had a situation where we were gonna fall, about six, 700 people that were gonna be left behind. But at the last minute, SEPTA came through and actually threw another train on the rail for to get those people out. So, it was a joint effort, and I really wanna thank the police department and the chief, who did a great job, along with the tenants who were there, Joe Veltin, our emergency management director, the Warminster Fire Department, who let us camp out at Station 90, Public Works, and everyone else that helped out. Aside from a minor medical issue and a couple other minor issues, it really went off without any problems. The other...next thing I'll talk about, been getting a lot of comments on door-to-door solicitation. As everyone should know, door-to-door solicitors must be registered. If someone knocks on your house and you ask for the registration, if they don't have it, please report them to the police. Likewise, if you have something on your door or window that says no solicitation, and we have those signs available for you here if you'd like, and they still knock on your door, please call the police. And if you feel that any of them are suspicious, if you're not certain that they are legitimate, call the police. We have a lot of people who feel, for some reason, that they're just going to go ahead and say lots of things on Facebook, sometimes hours and hours later. And I can understand people venting. Just understand, unless you call the police right away, there's not much that's gonna be done. So, please, call the police as it happens. And the last thing I'll say is, the other comment that's been out there is potholes. I think everyone's been noticing quite a bit of potholes. It's, you know, tis the season. Public Works is getting out there and filling them as quickly as possible. Know that though, with the weather the way it is, these are temporary fixes, and hopefully as the weather warms up, and we can go ahead and do permanent patch jobs. And that's all I have. You have my written report in case there are any questions.
Everything's good, Mr. Schuster. Thank you. Next up is solicitor's report. Mr. Bartle?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, this is my first meeting here, and I don't have a report. I think I've kinda covered what we've done. I would only say that we've had the opportunity of working with Mr. Schuster and his staff over the course of the last couple of weeks, and I think we're up and running and fully up to speed at this point in time. I know we've had an awful lot of assignments, and I believe that we've completed them and have them over here, and we look forward to continuing in that vein. Thank you.
And I think Ms. Baker gave you a...
It was duly noted, sir, and it will be handled.
Welcome to Warminster.
You have to.
I thought that's why she was hanging around.
It was noted. Thank you.
Engineers' report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to welcome Frank and his staff. We had one very productive staffing already, and I was impressed with everything, so welcome to the Warminster team here. You have my February 2018 report, a couple additions. The bid opening for the road program, it's anticipated to be March 6. So, Eric will have those numbers, and then he can do a presentation at the next meeting. But we anticipate open bids on March 6. Little bit bad news, there's no land development projects proposed for Planning Commission coming up, so I think they're still having a meeting to rework, but there's no anticipated land development projects.
Nothing in the pipeline, huh?
Nothing. No, no. And that's all I have. If the board has any questions for me?
Yeah. Steak and Shake? I noticed that the car wash is underway. Why we don't steak and shake?
That's been ongoing. I'll pass it over to the assistant manager, Mr. Zimmerman.
They picked up their permits yesterday afternoon. We have all of their agreements, and they are ready to go as soon as they wanna put a shovel in the ground.
Great.
So, we are very excited. It's about 16 weeks' worth of construction, and then they'll be open.
And we saw the car washes underway?
Car washes, demoing. They have their permits. They can start the work as soon as they're ready to go as well.
Any word from Weiss?
As far as we know, they're working on agreements right now, I believe, or the amended financial agreement. They have everything else in place, and we're just waiting for them to request their pre-con probably sometime in March, along with Lidl. We anticipate them both being on the same construction schedule.
You'll have plenty of activity in the spring, out in the field. So, some of those were gotten done. In fact, I think Weiss was approved October 2016 with those gas pumps and all that. So, you know, they sat around for a year, didn't decide, weren't sure what to do, and then, you know, came back. So, those projects are all probably starting in the spring. You know, the weather's breaking here, so that's all I have.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Kenner? Okay. Next up is township managers' announcements of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If there's no objection, I'd like to cancel the March 1 meeting.
None.
At the next meeting, which would be March 15, Warminster Fire Department will be here delivering their commendations, their annual commendations, so I'll be looking forward to that. You've authorized to advertise both the business privilege and mercantile tax ordinances. That'll be on the agenda. Possibility, we might have the housing rental ordinance available for advertisement in your review. And now, we'll have a resolution on the agenda about a budget committee, as was spoken about earlier.
Okay. Excellent. Anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster?
No.
Next up is our second round of public comment.
Sure.
Whoever wants to come first. Ms. Cook?
With regards to the housing rental agreement, will that be posted on the website prior to the meeting?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, that way, you know it was a mess last time, and...
I think you mentioned something about that.
Yeah, I think I did. Like, everything else, right? All right, thank you.
Hey, did you send me those pictures?
I did, but there's no Wi-Fi in here, so as soon as I step outside, I sent it to...
It's free Wi-Fi.
Yes, free Wi-Fi.
It's saying it wasn't there. Maybe I'm just not on it, 'cause I don't know how to do that kind of stuff.
We'll work it out. We just wanna make sure we get them out there. Thank you for taking those. Sure, come on up, Jack.
Second of all, you mentioned the signs about no soliciting. I would suggest that in addition to or replacement of, they make something that's like an orange and half the size or a third the size. They seem awfully big. I mean, people do it themselves. I went and reduced it, made, put it on another color sheet, so it's no big deal. But it seems like they're so big, it's unwieldy, and not as visible the color as might be ideal.
The no solicitation signs, right, Jack? The big agreements? Can we look at downsizing those?
We can do that, but also know that it doesn't have to be official from the township. You can post whichever one is...you can create your own.
Oh, but official is official.
Fine.
It says it right on there, official.
Mm-hmm.
I honestly don't know.
Jack said it says official on there. It says official on there, I believe it.
But you should know that, you know, if it doesn't fit in your window or door, and a different size works for you, you can post whatever notice.
But the color is, you know, maybe if it was orange, whatever. That was second of all. First of all, down here on the municipal complex is TBD. I hope this means that sanity has prevailed, and all that is now back to the original.
Well, actually, Jack, we are still gonna convene that committee, and I'll tell you why. We need to do an evaluation of our current facilities, because they are in disrepair. I mean, I don't know if you've been next door lately, but the chief will tell you what a mess it is. I mean, we're long-term planning. I'm not talking next year. We're talking long-term planning. We are gonna have to do some upgrades if we're gonna keep our current facilities.
Can we change the name of it to reflect exactly what you were saying?
When...
I hear what you're saying, though, Jack.
When we get past our financial wrangling here, and over the hump of the...
I think we should change it to Facilities Committee.
That's right.
Let me put some thoughts around it, 'cause I'm hearing different things about what the intent is, and I just wanna be clear. So, let me put some thoughts around that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I don't want to have the last word, but...
Ah, come on, Marie. We'd be disappointed if you didn't.
It sounds like I will. Number one, the police station, medication up the steps.
Sure.
I have a lot of medication. I was in a nursing home for two and a half months.
Yeah.
I cannot go up the steps to get rid of all my medication. He's sitting in my house, and I would love to...
I'll be by Saturday to pick it up.
Okay, because that's not the solution. The solution is, can we put it down in the floor at the entrance?
No, it needs to be in the box. No, just...yeah, it has to. Yeah, you can't leave it on the floor of the police station.
No, I don't mean that.
Oh. The box is bolted into the ground. It'd be kinda tough. The chief is coming here. I don't know if he's gonna be happy about that.
Answer that one.
Can you bolt it down the ground, I think?
Lower at the bottom of the steps? I don't think that's gonna be an option.
Come on up, chief. We're glad to see you made it.
The box cannot be moved, 'cause it has to sit under video surveillance, and the video surveillance is up on the plateau where the steps are. One's why I need a new building, because it's not acceptable. So, I got your vote. The other one is, if there's a phone to the right, when you come in, if you dial zero, if there's a clerk, call him. We'll come out and get it. That's if we have a clerk.
The police upstairs.
No, no, no. Yeah, but they'll call...if you dial zero, it'll go, or if you dial 1401 or zero, it'll go right into Joey Banks.
You mean from the front door now?
Yeah, from the front door. When you go to the right. When you go in, when I'm chief, I put one in there, so you don't have to go up.
Thank God.
But when you come in, there's a phone to your right on that ground level. You just call the front desk, and they'll come out and get it. Needs a lot of work.
Yes. Even when we were there with the youth, remember where we used to have the youth program?
Oh, yeah, when I first got here in 96. It's now my evidence room.
The building was already history, so crap.
That building's older than me, and I'm 50, so...
I'm sorry. My English is very, very...
Let them know what you say. We need a new building. Tell them how you feel.
Yeah, tell them. The police...I don't know about this little room, but the police station definitely needs a building. Definitely, okay? The other thing I wanted to say is, I loved hanging in the air. The problem with Mann's Road and Roberts Road, I am dead serious about who's going to pay for, you know, how do you call that, putting a structure back to the roads, because they open up to do...
Craig, you wanna address that one? Go ahead.
Township will not be paying for any of that.
Any of that, because they put a lot of pipes everywhere. They are going to his neighborhood. They are going everywhere.
Our office, the township, Public Works, and anything related to DEP or the conservation...the county, the county has to come out as well. You have about four different agencies looking at that. And if it's related to water and sewer, their inspector will also be out there representing the Water and Sewer Authority. If it's not done per the standards, there's no cost to the township.
The other thing, Mr. Kenner, I hope they didn't...they meant to you to tell you that the water that used to lay down on Mann's, Marion, and Roberts is taken care of, because it's not. And that was one thing that we worked and worked and worked to make sure that it would be taken care of. It's not.
The large...
The big puddle of water and ice that sits in the corner of Roberts and Mann's and Marion.
At Marion, all right.
Yeah, I'm...mixed up with Mann's. It's Marion and Roberts, and they have to be piled. And when the school left, they promised, the construction company promised, that they were going to do a huge amount of work, so we wouldn't have the water there. Nothing has happened. Absolutely zero. The same picture for the last 40 years.
Well, because what happens is, there's some agreement, and if it's not documented or memorialized with the township or our office, then we're not aware of it.
Oh, no, they were...no, no, no. They were talking here, and it was part of the deal.
Okay.
So, the deal didn't work. And the big, huge stones that are in front of Roberts, which, by the way, the sidewalk is not finished either, in Roberts, in case anybody wants to know that. All those stones is there, what are they for?
The ones that they were removed, and now they...
Is anybody going through those neighborhoods to see what is happening in there?
Say it.
Anybody from the township that is in charge?
We just removed all the stones from the basin area that were complaining...the other gentleman complained about the big rocks. That was all removed and grassed now. That was all approved, just recently, in the last couple of months, right? Last two months?
No, no, no. I'm talking about yesterday. There is a mountain of stones in Roberts Road.
Go look at it.
Okay.
It's the retaining area above the sidewalk. No, I'm talking about the...
In the road?
No, no, not in the road. It's in the property.
Okay. I'll have my guys look at it.
I wish somebody goes in there and put order. They need order in there, please.
Okay.
Chief, can you put order in there?
What's that?
I asked if you... If he puts order, then we can... If he gets his building, he'll do it. Right. Listen to me about the medication. Let me tell you something. I go to Maxwell Pharmacy, and the pharmacy didn't want to deal with my medication, to take it away from me. I'm telling you, so...
You can drop it off at the police station at any time.
I have been very, very aware of how much damage the medication does to water.
Absolutely.
From the time that I was a little girl in Africa. This is not new to me. That's why I don't want to dispose of that medication without knowing that it's going to go to the proper place. I came here in this meeting, and I told you, in Europe, we gave it to the pharmacies. The pharmacy collected and sent it to Africa as donation. All the medicines that are not used in European countries, and they get back to the pharmacy. The pharmacy repackaged them and sent them to Africa. Okay? So, I just wanted you to know all that.
Well, just so you know, here in Bucks County, all the medications that's collected throughout the different townships, all makes its way up to Bucks County. It's incinerated.
Yeah, that's not good. That's not good. Yes. You...
Where are we? Any further public comment? Any more comment from the public? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to supervisors' comments. Ms. Frescatore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank again all the volunteers that put their time in on behalf of their township, because I know you take time out of your busy schedules to help out the township, and we certainly appreciate it. Congratulations to all that have served in the past, and all the ones that are gonna be serving in the future. Also, would like to give a warm welcome to Mr. Bartles. I think you did a great job, and we're looking forward to working with you. You're getting your feet wet with the staff, and I wish you the best of luck.
And the public.
Thank you.
Now you know Warminster, okay?
It's the water.
Would like to thank Amanda for really working hard on getting our businesses in here. We want that shake and steak really bad.
They know.
And Craig, if you could keep water on these streets, I would really appreciate that.
[laughing]
I know. Thank you so much for all the work that you do with the engineering. And Greg, again, between you and the police department, you guys did a phenomenal job with the parade. I...hats off to you. You did a great job. And I'd also like to thank my fellow board members for considering the motion that Mr. Monroe had made. I think it might be an answer to our prayers. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Monroe?
I have none.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, I just wanna thank, welcome Frank to the board, and I'm sure you're gonna do a fine job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Crowley?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like everybody else, welcome Frank. Looking forward to working with you. You did a good job. This was not the easy introductory meeting we had all hoped for, but I appreciate the public coming out and sparring with us once again. We always enjoy it. Please keep coming out. Please keep, even if we disagree. I respect and appreciate each one of your opinions, so please keep coming. And then, I wanna thank the police, the township administration, everybody who was involved in not only getting the train station ready for the parade. I lived not far from that train station, and I...it went very smoothly. There was no problems. It was really quite impressive. And I wanna thank the people of Warminster for not tearing down our light poles and setting fire to things when we won the Super Bowl. I went outside in joy with everyone else, and it was really great. I mean, they set off about $4,000 worth of fireworks in the Speedway that night, and I only heard the fire trucks once. So, that's a good sign. But it was a great evening, and it was just the way we handled it with the parade. We got a lot of blowback. I think...were you here for the Pope, or was that before your time?
That was before me.
Yeah. The Pope, we got all this, everything ready for the Pope, and then, you know, the crowds never came.
The city of Philadelphia scared the daylights out of you.
Yeah, the city of Philadelphia scared everyone. So, we didn't quite know what to expect with that parade, and it really went off without a hitch, and that's a credit to all the planning of everybody involved. So, thank you, and that's all. to all the planning of everybody involved. So, thank you, and that's all I got.
I just want to take one moment to thank Frank Bartle for coming on board. A welcome, and
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you and your staff, and want to thank the rest of the staff and professionals for a professional job that's done here, month in and month out, for the residents. I also want to make people aware that we won't be meeting until March 15, but beginning March 1 is Colon Cancer Awareness Month. So, please, if you haven't had your screening, please schedule your colonoscopy. As we all know, I'm a lucky survivor. A lot of people aren't, because they don't schedule their colonoscopies. It's a very treatable disease, if you catch it early. So, please schedule, take the opportunity, and remember it's Colon Cancer Awareness Month, and schedule your colonoscopy. And also, the board will have an executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss personnel. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Semveds. Mr. McPhillips, meeting adjourned.